Currently it's four fifteen ish and I will. I'll open the work, play the workshop for November fifth, 2020. We'll just go ahead and dive right in for public comments, citizens who wish to address the council in any matter. This on this workshop agenda may do so, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And no discussion or final act will be taken by the city council. You're at the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council member. Back again discussing cemetery, the Heart of Cemetery. I started working on this somewhere around July the twenty eighth of twenty fifteen. Met with y'all. And a little background on this, there was a historical marker placed in nineteen eighty five. The first person that I can track down that was buried there was in eighteen sixty eight. There was some restoration done away the tenth of nineteen eighty six. And October the second of twenty fifteen. There was employees of the HEB in Melton. This was a cleanup day. They came over and worked and they did a beautiful job. And then November the twenty first, the boy scout troop of Spotsia by the Methodist Church completed the cleanup. If you would take this over. This will help a lot. There are several sites there that are Civil War veterans. I can't do it anymore. Seems like age has caught up with me. And I would, if, if you would just have a little bit of cleanup. That the Hillcrest Cemetery, that is beautiful. The Hillcrest, y'all did a wonderful job in selecting the Hillcrest Cemetery takeover. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Very good. Then let's move on to a regular work session agenda. And item number one on that agenda is to discuss maybe need any regular meeting agenda items for the meeting posted for tonight, Thursday, November fifth, twenty twenty. Council, anything that you want to discuss? It notice, and I should have asked this question earlier or looked more closely, but on the consent agenda. The city is buying some automobiles from Sils before ten Marcus Adams C. I'm assuming there were no competitive bids, local competitive bids within the required range?
Have to be within five percent.
Right, right. Yeah, I know we always like to move there locally if we can. Okay. Sidney Russ had some comments?
Mayor, if you don't mind, there's just a couple of minor changes that we're proposing on the second reading of the amendments to the Central Area District. And Mrs. Wright has a couple of slides to just go over them really quickly.
Always too tall, but I go, we got a mic. So this is just, we had a few minor changes with state district amendments that is set on the consent agenda for tonight. I just want to bring that to your attention. They're very minor changes, but I did think because it was presented one way. First reading, I wanted to make it clear to the council what was being changed. You know exactly what you're voting on when it comes up in council later tonight. So you see, this is the ability table that we, well, Brian had presented last meeting. There was one small change, well, one substantial small change that I need to point out. We added a subsection C that's highlighted in C, it's a section six nine point ten D does not apply to single family homes. So if you look over on the columns, it says exterior veneer removal. I doubt there are any single family homes that would need to have exterior veneer applied because usually those are those three story buildings downtown area. Now, the single family homes that are along MLK, MLK, but just in case any have those, we wanted to make sure that that remove exterior veneer column that we added. After discussion with P and Z did not apply to those single family homes. That is how it's presented in the last meeting. Brian did say that because he thought that that was included, but didn't actually make it onto the chart. So we did add that change, but this is how it was presented in last meeting. And some minor new things that I noticed when I was updating the chart, I noticed that the section numbers, then also sections instead SCC. Here is the sections, I spell those out. And then I noticed that the exterior veneer removal column that is a section and so sections plural, there's two sections on there. And then this is a change, this is presented all through city council meetings as having murals approved by the Main Street Advisory Committee. After more discussion in our office, we thought that would be an unnecessary restraint on freedom of speech, murals or artwork. And the Main Street Advisor Committee actually couldn't do anything except rubber stamp. What the planning department would have to do anyway, because, because they're artwork and because they're protected by the First Amendment. They're very, the only regulations imply are very objective content neutral, very clear standards. There's no room for activity. It's really just a checklist if they comply. So there's no reason to have the Main Street Advisor Committee go through and do a checklist for something that the city is going to have to go through and check this anyway. They wouldn't be able to veto anything if that's the normal city policy. I did create the mural city policy with the help of David Olson and the planning team. So it's very clear objective standards. If you're curious, we can email to you, but it's very simple. Standards that anyone can comply with. And that is it. So I'll take any questions, if you have any questions or any comments.
Obviously, there's, nothing needs to be changed, nothing needs to be noted publicly during the council meeting regarding. The central area, that's why it's on the. On second final reading, right? Nothing needs to be said out loud for those changes.
We didn't believe so.
Noted in the charts.
Right, we didn't believe so just because those are minor changes. We could, I could give them two slides, just in case though you think that the public needs to be aware of.
I don't think so. I just want to be sure that we were all straight. No making a motion or anything like that needs to.
And leave it on the.
Okay.
These changes are in the draft that's uploaded in the Prime Gov, so you don't need to make any changes during your meeting to make those changes. They're already in the draft that you will.
Mayor, I'm sorry, on your question, I need to correct my statement on the, on the. Purchase of the vehicles, we actually, this is a recommended through a cooperative purchasing contract because their mark unit and our local vendors do not. They don't have the interest or ability to provide those. So I'm, I am sorry I stated that incorrectly.
That's okay.
I couldn't get my agenda up to.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, moving on to item number two of the work session is to discuss cemetery operating, operation options.
So council will recall that in July, I believe, we had an initial work session on this topic. And you all asked us to do some additional research and we've had the opportunity to do that. And so I wanted to bring back an update of, of what we found based on the questions that you had. So just as a quick reminder to frame the discussion, you'll recall that in twenty eighteen, we began discussions with the Temple Cemetery Company. Which at that time owned and operated Hillcrest Cemetery about the possibility of the city taking over that responsibility. That ownership and responsibility for operating and maintaining the cemetery. Hillcrest is about sixty eight acres. It does have active burials. The city had provided financial support to the cemetery since two thousand and eleven. We did a staff conducted an evaluation of the request of a cemetery. We evaluated their financial position as well as assess options for moving forward. Ultimately, ending in our recommendation to you and your authorization of a transfer agreement. Where the city of Temple took over ownership and maintenance of Hillcrest Cemetery. So that became official on May first of twenty nineteen and the city now owns and operates the cemetery. There are three other smaller cemeteries in Temple that we are aware of, New Hope, Seven Star and Hodge Cemetery. We have been approached by, about the possibility of taking over these cemeteries as well. However, unlike Hillcrest, New Hope, Seven Star and Hodge, all three of those really do not have a clear owner. So there isn't a board or an entity for us or a person for us to open conversations with. Like we did with the Hillcrest Cemetery. There are some options though, and first just let me orient you to where these sites are. So Seven Star is just north of Hillcrest. And just east of the park. And Seven, Seven Star is east of Hillcrest within the railroad right of way actually. And then Hodge is behind the. Chapel Oaks apartment complex. So again, as I mentioned, there is some options, there are some options for us to consider. There is a section of the Texas Health and Safety Code that could be a very good fit for this situation. This section allows a city that has a cemetery within its boundaries or its jurisdiction to take possession and control of the cemetery. If this, if the council finds that the cemetery threatens or endangers public health, safety, comfort or welfare. If we wanted to pursue this option, the process is that the city council would pass a resolution. And that resolution would specify that, that, that not later than the sixtieth day after getting a notice. Of a declaration of intent to take possession. The city would present a plan to remove or repair any fences, walls or other improvements, straighten and reset any monuments, memorial stones. That are a threat or danger to public health and safety. And to take other proper steps to restore and maintain the premises and importantly, in decent condition. So essentially your first step in the process is to, if you wanted to take this route would be to pass a resolution. That basically direct staff to give notice, to give a sixty day notice period. And that notice has to be sent via mail to all persons shown within the county clerk's office records to have an interest in the cemetery. We also need to notify the Texas Historical Commission. And then also have the, have the notice publicized in the Temple Daily Telegram. And then after that notice and that, that, that sixty day period of notice and after presenting the plan. Then you would have the opportunity to take possession and control of the cemetery. And then you would have the responsibility and the obligation to continue to maintain the cemetery. So that it does not endanger public health, safety or welfare. Important to note that if you pursue this option, additional burial spaces may not be offered for sale. Under this section of the Health and Safety Code. And it also must remain open to the public. Those are the two criteria that, that we would have to comply with.
We, that means open to public visitation, but not burial?
Yes, ma'am. Right.
Is this an all or none sort of thing? You're all three or?
Okay, no.
I've never heard of Hodge.
Hodge is a cemetery that Mr. Hensley was speaking about. So when we talked in July, our conversation was just around New Hope and Seven Star. And since then, Mr. Hensley and I had a conversation and also, we, we also wanted to make sure that we were covering any potential. We were presenting the conversation around any potential cemetery. So these three, I'm not saying that there, there are not others that we're not aware of, but these are the three. This is a comprehensive list of what staff is aware of at this time that, that are cemeteries within the city of Temple. And that are, that you would have the option, the opportunity to take over. There are some other limitations. You can't take over family cemeteries through this Health and Safety Code. So there are some family cemeteries within the city limits, but these are the only three that we're aware of. So it's, it, it's, it's not a very, I think I have some pictures if I, I'm going to skip through here just really quickly. Yeah, so this is, it, it's, it's a landlocked kind of area. Which would be a challenge for us to, to, to figure out. But you know, we, we would be, we've, we've again working through that conversation in the event that you want to pursue this. But essentially it backs up to the apartment complex and then it is surrounded by single family houses. But that, so that is, that's Hodge Cemetery.
How do you, how do you get into it?
That's.
Challenge?
That is, that is a good question.
We, we go through with.
Well.
Which is probably not.
You may.
Yeah.
So we have had some initial conversations with the apartment complex about their willingness to grant an access easement. To the city for maintenance and the, which they have responded favorably to that request. However, what we will also need to tackle is the. Remember the criteria is that the cemetery has to remain open to the public. So we would have to, we would have to figure that out. There is a, there, we do have an, I believe Christina, it's an easement. From the road to the cemetery, but it looks like there's a structure or fence built over it. I think it's an easement and not be simple. So, so there, there would be some more work to do on, on that if we wanted to, to tackle this.
Do we know how many people are buried there?
And so from which road is the easement?
I'm not sure, but I can find out. So one of the things that we had discussed when we talked in July was if there were other options for acquisition. Other than using the Health and Safety Code. And there are, you can purchase directly from the owner of record if ownership can be established. I don't think that this is going to be an option for us in these cases. Because. You know, one of the cemeteries is within right, is railroad right of way. Seven Star does have an owner of record through Bellcat, but it is a quick claim deed. And so it would be unlikely that the top option would be available to us. So really the only other option you have would be to do condemnation through an eminent domain process. If you were to take over the cemeteries under section seven thirteen of the Health and Safety Code. We believe that you would be looking at approximately forty thousand dollars for the full first year. Of operation, but, but there would be several one-time expenses in that number. Including the purchase of Simsites, which is the cemetery software program that we have purchased and used to track. Records for Hillcrest and then the capital signage would also be a one-time expense. So going forward, you, you wouldn't have those every year.
But still you'd be close to forty thousand annually.
I would say no, I would say you would be closer to twenty thousand dollars annually. Because you wouldn't, you wouldn't every year have to buy the software.
Right.
Or invest in signage or capital improvements.
You would be slightly more in that brand for the mowing and lawn maintenance. Is that first twenty ones like only like seven months or a partial year? It might be a little bit more, but you wouldn't have the initial headstone repairs and lawn or grounds repairs that you have to do if you took a.
So I would say probably twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars would be a reasonable expectation going forward.
So if the requirement is to leave them open, so to speak, you have to, would like a formal entrance have to be built or something? Or just simply, you just can't close them off?
Right, yes, sir. Right. You can't, you couldn't restrict public access totally. You can have hours. But you.
Of a big entrance or even a little entrance.
The only thing that you're obligated to do is to repair any. Any portion of the cemetery that threatens public health and safety. So you don't have to do anything. You don't have to make any aesthetic improvements. You can, but you don't have to. You, you would just need to address any trees or fences or headstones that, that were basically deemed dangerous. And then you would have to keep it moving forward. So the, that's, that's your largest expense is in the, in the mowing and the lawn maintenance cost.
And our general insurance would just then expand to those, to, to those three cemeteries.
Yes, and it would be a very, you know, five hundred dollars is what we're estimating the yearly, the annual cost.
Right.
Do you know of anyone who'd be opposed to us doing this that has anything to do with those three cemeteries?
So Kevin, who is by the way on virtually today, if you have any hard questions, I'll punt them to him.
Cemetery czar.
Kevin has, has reached out and talked to as many people that, that we know that are involved with the cemeteries as possible. There is a gentleman who conducts burials at Seven Star Cemetery currently. And because if you move, he's not, he doesn't own it. New Hope, thank you. I'm sorry. Seven Star is full, Seven Star is being maintained by. The Juneteenth Celebration Committee, Willie Floyd is really the cheerleader and the champion of that. Yes, thank you. So New Hope, there, there is a gentleman who does some burials. So I think that it's possible that he would. He wouldn't be able to continue to do that unless there is somebody who has proof that they have. Have already purchased a plot. But not from him because he didn't have, he doesn't have any ownership to sell them a plot. So, but you know, if the cemetery was at some point operated, because they, they, at some point, New Hope had a board of directors and they had, you know, a. They were active and were selling. So if somebody historically had some paperwork, then that, that burial could continue. But new sales could not happen. So other than that, I am not aware of any opposition. And that, and we have had many inquiries about really all three of these. New Hope has been the most, I received the most contact about New Hope Cemetery. From neighborhood area. Residents because it is not being maintained at all right now. The Seven Star Cemetery is being maintained, but the, but. The longevity of that solution is not, you know, that's not a permanent solution. So it will fall into a, a situation. If that volunteer group, a, a public health, safety situation, if that volunteer group were to stop. And they have expressed. They've expressed the desire for the city to step in and, and, and take over. And then Hodge, Mr. Hensley has been the champion of, of Hodge Cemetery.
The reason I ask the question, I think it's the appropriate thing to do, but not if we run into a firestorm. And if there's a firestorm from anybody, don't do that cemetery. I don't sense that's going to be the issue. Most of the feedback we've had from the city standpoint has been positive about us moving forward on this.
And I think the process that you would get feedback would be, you know, you would, you would begin the process of. Doing the notices, we would, you know, make sure that we got the word out and then, and then you have time to consider any public feedback. Positive or negative before ultimately making your decision. So.
You want to be careful not getting in a situation where any could be, you know, not going punished.
Yes, sir.
I know for Seven Star, they're anxious. Anxious and also talk with the lady that, that others in New Hope and she's concerned about the New Hope. And I didn't know about Hodge.
Hodge is. Hodge is, doesn't have, doesn't, it, it, it doesn't. It doesn't have a regular group like Seven Star that is maintaining it. But there have been volunteer groups that from time to time come out and, and do some maintenance, but it's not a routine situation.
Buford, you mentioned Hodge, right? Hodge Cemetery? What, do you have some relationship, personal relationship with Hodge Cemetery?
Professionally. We get calls occasionally saying.
Oh, okay. And that's why you go.
Ask us to go.
I see. Okay.
About the same size as Seven Star?
It's configured differently, but I would say yes, it's nowhere near as large as New Hope.
Buford, do you have any idea on the acreage of Hodge?
It's not.
It's not.
It's not very big. It's really, it's surrounded by trees and it's really overgrown. It's cool, but a little spooky. So it's hard to take care of because it's hard to move in there, but it's not a large tract. Oh, yeah, very kind of Louisiana looking, overgrown kind of.
Buford, are the calls you get for, to maintain issues from people, is it because people are vandalizing in there? Or just throwing trash or just cleanup?
I, I knew about it was back there because I knew about it when I was in high school, but I don't think people know it's even there. And so mostly it's just neighbors concern. That's getting a little overgrown.
Okay, so it's overgrowth that you get called about? Three comedians are busy here.
So one of the things that we had talked about in July is, is there an option where we can step in and take over maintenance at the cemeteries? But allow sell of plots to continue. The only option again would be through pursuing the acquisition of the cemeteries through a condemnation process. And the staff has some pretty significant concerns about trying to. Staff has some pretty significant concerns about trying to pursue that option. Primarily because we basically have no records, so trying to continue to allow active burials to occur. When you don't know what space has, what space is already occupied and you don't know if someone has already. Purchased. A plot, it's just very. We just see constant issues arising from that. In addition to the cost of going through the condemnation process and spending money on. The purchase of the, of the, and the actual property when we have an option under the Health and Safety Code that I think is what we need. Addresses the main concerns that we hear from our citizens, which is that just, it's not being maintained and it's a health and safety hazard. So there, so you asked a question and so the answer is yes. But it, it does have issues associated with it that we would caution you to, to consider before going in that direction. So next step, if you, if you wanted to pursue the Health and Safety Code option. I would suggest this, this path forward, we could bring a resolution. To you at your December third council meeting. That resolution would essentially direct city staff to issue the notice of declaration of intent to take possession and control. Then following that, that adoption of that resolution, staff would do the notices that are required. In the Health and Safety Code as well as any other communication that, that we think would be beneficial to make sure that. Our citizens are aware of what's being considered. That would allow you to hold a public hearing on February, at your February third city council meeting. Where you would hear public comments regarding the intent to take possession. Of the cemeteries, you would hear the plan for repairing any fences, walls or other improvements and the other. Requirements that, that we would need to follow and you would consider adopting that plan. And then act, i- if you chose to move forward and adopt that plan and again, it could be, it is as Mrs. Walker asked, it is not. All or nothing, it's, it would be an individual decision for each cemetery, then assuming you, you chose that. Option, then the city would begin maintaining the cemetery and addressing any of the health and safety concerns based on the plan. And if you chose to use eminent domain, we would need to start some title search. We would potentially need to resurvey the properties if the title search showed any changes in boundaries for, from what we. Have records of, we would have to have the property appraised, we would need to make initial offers to the owner. According to the tax appraisal district records as well as any other potential owner interested parties that were identified by the title search. You have a statutory thirty day waiting period after that. We do have to require proof of ownership if anyone accepts the offer and then we would enter into a negotiating agreement. If we can establish ownership, if no response or if we can't establish ownership, then we would need to send final offer to the same people and entities. There's been a fourteen day waiting period, at that time, our legal counsel would file a petition for eminent domain, send the notice to the potential owners. And provide notice by publication, then you would have the hearing before the special commissioners who establish the property value. At that time, you, we would deposit that amount into the registry of the court and at that time we would take possession of the property. There is a twenty day appeal window, assuming no appeal was filed, then that order becomes final and we would. At that point have ownership of the property, so if you chose eminent domain, that would be the process that we would need to follow. So at this point, I'm kind of looking, I'm not kind of, I am looking for direction from you on if you would like staff to continue to work on. One or more of these cemeteries, if you would like to pursue this through the Health and Safety Code. Option that's available, and if so, again, that. That schedule that we would look to follow is there. And if you would like to do this, then I'm gonna need a vacation.
I needed one after hearing you explain. I think Health and Safety is the obvious avenue for this. My opinion. And all three of them. Your direction.
You will, so you will see another item related to this in December.
For all three.
For all three.
Okay, very good, anything else before we go across the street? At this time, I will focus this workshop and. We convene, we convene across the three and five.